So, welcome everyone, and I hope everyone had a fantastic Thanksgiving celebration with their family and friends. As, I think everyone is aware, Margaret Dames, who was the Cornwall Central School District Superintendent of Schools, I think between 1992 and 2002, recently passed, and I ask that you stand for a moment of silence, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, thank you, one and all. So at this time, I would like to open up the meeting and ask if there is anyone in the audience who would like to be heard. And so, with no one coming forward, we'll then just move then to the reports part of our agenda, and start with Kate and Nicholas, our high school board representatives.
CES, good news for November. November is flying by. Our students at Cornwall Elementary School have been spending time in and out of the classroom, learning so many new things, and focusing on November's character trait of integrity. At the beginning of the month, we celebrated Halloween with our annual Halloween parade. Parents of students from all grade levels lined up along the sidewalk to see everyone's costumes and to jam out to some fun music. Our PTO held a Coffee with the Principal event before holding their second meeting of the year. Parents got a chance to chat with Mr. German, enjoy a little treat, and get a cup of joe. On November 7th, our building hosted a successful superintendent's conference day, where all of CCSD's elementary-level teachers got to collaborate with one another. They focused on developing lesson plans for the Smithsonian Science curriculum, as well as sharing their writing lessons to create writing binders for each of their students. Our 4th grade students took a trip to the National Purple Heart Hall of Honor this month. There, they learned about the evolution of the Purple Heart Medal and the museum's connection to the Hudson Valley, from the American Revolution to Temple Hill Day. They also had a chance to follow specific recipients through their journey with different interactive stations. November is Native American Heritage Month, and we've been celebrating with a different fact each day on our morning announcements. Students have been able to learn about notable Native American figures, both throughout history and from the present day. They also learned about the history of the Thanksgiving holiday, and many had their own feasts in their classrooms before the holiday break. We are now looking forward to our Cornwall Cares program throughout the month of December, the Holiday Gift Shop, and seeing the CCHS Concert Choir when they visit us for Christmas caroling. Good note, good news for COH. The Student Council had their first meeting on Wednesday, November 8th, and they will be collaborating on the, with the 1st grade to run the annual product drive. From December 4th to the 13th, the COH community will be collecting essential personal hygiene products and food items to be donated to the Food Bank of Hudson Valley. The event will culminate with a Stuff, with the Stuff the Bus event on December 13th. The Student Council is currently working to get "To Know Me" posters for the cafeteria so the student body can learn a little about who is representing them. On Monday, November 13th, COH celebrated World Kindness Day. Staff and students wore T-shirts or sweatshirts that said something about being kind. The purpose of World Kindness is to highlight good deeds in the community, focusing on the positive power and the common thread of kindness which binds us. Friday, November 18th, was Hilarious Hat Day at COH. Students and staff had a great time participating. Many of the hats were super creative. Thanks to the generosity of an anonymous family, COH provided Thanksgiving meals to several families who were in need. The family has been donating baskets of food since 1993. In the holiday season, the COH staff is planning to assist many families with holiday presents. November 1st grade visited Black Rock Forest and the Hudson Highland Museum. At Black Rock, they participated in the Trailblazing Program, which is an introduction to hiking. At the museum, they took a nature hike and learned about the animal kingdom. All right, and, good news for Willow. Willow Ave. celebrated their annual Halloween parade on October 30th. Students had a wonderful day filled with Halloween activities and had a great time parading outside in their costumes in front of their families and friends. The staff joined in on the fun and dressed up as cos, and dressed up as referees. On Election Day, our 2nd grade students held a school-wide election spirit day on November 21st. 2nd graders campaigned, hung posters, and set up a voting booth for all students and staff to participate in. Students voted and chose Pyjama Day by a landslide. We dressed in red, white, and blue to honor our veterans for Veterans, for Veterans Day, and our 1st graders welcomed their special veterans into their classrooms to honor them. We are collecting pajamas again this year for the Scholastic Pajama Drive. Kids not only receive pajamas, but they also receive a free book for a bedtime story. Our PTO held our Boys' Dragon Dance in, in November. Boys brought their favorite dragon for an evening of fun, games, and laughter. Mr. Fred, Willow's head custodian, was given the principal's award for always working hard and keeping Willow clean and safe for our students and staff. In November, students have partis, been participating in our annual turkey unit in PE. Students trying to knock down bowling pins that look like silly turkeys. We hope everyone had a happy Thanksgiving.
All right, Cornwall Central Middle School, good news. The 5th and 6th Grade Student Activities Council organized a food drive to help families in need. 5th and 6th Grade homerooms collected Thanksgiving meal staples, and faculty and staff donated turkeys and gift cards to support families who may need a little bit of help over the holidays. 8th grade students danced the night away at the annual PTO Red Carpet Event. Our students got dressed up and enjoyed a dance party, chocolate fountain, popcorn bar, and cupcakes. Students also had the opportunity to win baskets donated by CCMS families, and each student left with a water bottle. Many thanks to the PTO for an outstanding event. CCMS students honored Veterans Day this month with a beautiful display of American flags, dedicated to a special veteran in their life. The flags were proudly placed in front of the middle school and visited by local vets on Veterans Day, in what has become a yearly tradition. The annual Cornwall's Got Talent Show, in honor of Leah Bernardinelli, was a huge success with a tremendous variety of acts. It was a very fun and impressive ending. All proceeds from ticket sales will go towards the PTO Leah Bernardinelli Scholarship. And good news from CCHS. October 11th, Annual Product Drive. Students donated blood, saving over 50 lives. Of course, Halloween was popular with students and administration dressing up. The CCHS Drama Club started November off with their Fall Production Radium Girls, which as always was a huge hit. The cast went all out in their performances across multiple nights. Congratulations again. Poetry Out Loud competitions took place before the break, with students performing a rendition of a poem of their choice to their English class. Good luck to those moving on to the next round. Teacher-Student Swap Day was another event that took place before break. Teachers and students swapped attires, sweatpants, and students going business casual. New National Honor Society candidates were officially inducted into the Honor Society with a beautiful ser, straters and students, operation words of support. Proud parents and friends joined to watch.
Nicholas and Kate, thank you for that, that, that good news, and, you know, as a veteran myself, it, it does the sole good to see our community rally on these holidays and, and understand how important this country that we live in is, and, and how we're keeping the memory of those who went before us alive. And, uh, those are valuable lessons that, um, I'm grateful that the schools are continuing here. So thank you for that. Moving on to the superintendent's report, Terry?
Thank you, John. So, so much to celebrate over the past month or so. Um, it really kind of celebrates what we hold near and dear, the academics, arts, and athletics. Uh, so starting with academics, a few of us were able to attend and celebrate over 50 new inductees into the National Honor Society just last week, and it was just absolutely amazing to see and celebrate the students for their service, their leadership, and their character. In the spirit of celebrating the arts, we had a large group of students recognized and participating in the NISMIA Zone 9 Music Festival, which are for the best of the best musicians in the area. Our very own Nick was in attendance there, along with a lot of his classmates, Stephanie, Emerson, Valora, Morgan, Reed, Josephine, Mia, Patrick, Manille, Garcia, and Moses. So, congratulations to those students who participated in the music festival in Walk Hill, I believe just a week ago. Uh, in this upcoming weekend, the 2023 NISMIA All-State Musicians from Cornwall will descend on Rochester, uh, and the participants being celebrated and participating in that all-state conference this weekend are Emerson Barth, Garcia Warren, Christian Green, and Reed Johnson. Uh, so that's something that we'll, um, be sure to see lots of pictures of and hopefully be able to bring those students in person to a board meeting soon. Um, and last but not least, in the area of athletics, uh, fall was a phenomenal season for Cornwall. Our boys soccer and, and varsity football both ended up being Section 9 champions. Our girls volleyball again made the Final Four in the state, and our girls cross-country team had the highest placing ever for Cornwall, placing third as a team in the state, so, um, and I do know that that is a young team, so I can only imagine what's going to happen in the next few years as they compete, um, at an exceptional level for the state. So, lots to celebrate, um, in all three of the A's.
Thank you, Terry. Uh, so that takes us to the president's report. I'll be brief. Uh, just a few follow-ups from our, our last meeting. First, uh, as it pertains to the presentations, as everyone recalls, we had a, some excellent presentations last time, uh, on special ed from Nicole Tarassi, and then Catherine Wilhelm and Joe DeBolt gave us a introductory presentation on the Drop Rotation Initiative. Um, I've heard really positive feedback, uh, from just about everyone as it pertained to those presentations, so, so thank you for that. And let me just, I, I reiterate my, my, uh, my comments last meeting and also in email that I understand that there's probably follow-on questions that, that people have. I've, I've, I've started to receive some of those, so, so I will act as the grand consolidator. Uh, so if you could, get me your questions on the special ed side, um, and your questions on the drop rotation side by the end of the month. That way, I can bundle them, make sense of them, reduce the redundancy, and then turn them over to Terry to give him hopefully enough runway so that, um, at our next board meeting in December, that may be a little aspirational, but, but still, uh, to, to see if we could have at least some of those, those questions, uh, addressed to keep the, the conversation alive and progress moving forward. Okay, great, thank you for that. Also, uh, under the, the topic of Biagini Woods, uh, I think everyone's aware now that the zoning Board of Appeals met last week, um, to consider a request by the developer. We, as the district, submitted a, a letter of opposition to the ZBA, the Zoning Board of Appeals. They did not take action last week. Um, they've actually said they will review all the different informations that they've been provided, and I believe they're scheduled to, to, to put this issue on the December 18th meeting agenda. So just as, as FYI, and, um, we'll go from there. And lastly, uh, regarding board goals and the progress they're, they're in, I think we're making, uh, pretty good strides in that, that regard. I, I will open up as new business, uh, discussion, our progress right to date on the, on the survey, as it pertains to engagement survey for, for the district, uh, under the goal of establishing or maintaining a, a positive, uh, work environment for all, right? So, so with that, I'll just open it up. If anyone has any questions? None? Great, so let's then move on to the next item, which is the consent agenda. The consent agenda, uh, before us, we have items 1 through 7. If there's anyone who wishes to pull any of these items, please feel free, and I will remove it from, uh, consideration and we'll deal with it separately. So let me just pull the, the board right now. Is there any items here that anyone wishes to discuss separately? Christian?
4 and 7.
Okay, thank you, 4 and 7. Any others? All right, so with that, um, can I have a motion for the consent agenda consisting of items 1 through 3, and 5, and 6?
I'm moved.
Thank you, Brendan. Uh, second, Christian, thank you. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you, everyone. All right, so, let's go to the two items. First, we'll take the item number 4, which is placement of CPSE and CSE, um, cases. We have a motion.
I'm moved.
Second?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, discussion. Christian?
This is mostly informational. When I logged in, I didn't see any attached placements, so I was wondering if maybe I was, did not see the document, and maybe people could just tell me if there was before, or is there anything here? Or not?
So, so thank you for that, Christian. Um, I, I've heard a similar observation before the meeting. Terry?
Yeah, I think it was just a leftover from our previous meeting, so there's nothing to approve.
So there's nothing to do here?
There's nothing to do. So, I was wondering if there was something, if there was an item on the agenda?
It's by road, I guess, if, no other word. So nothing to do here, and, um, how, how, how we, how we go about doing this, I think, is now we need a, a, a motion to remove it from the agenda for consideration. Could I have that motion? Christian, thank you. A second?
Second.
All in favor of removing item 4?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Great, so we'll just have that removed for memorialization. Thank you for that, Christian. Okay, uh, takes us to item number 7, which is a Blue Orange Agreement Resolution, a motion for consideration of item 7.
I'm moved.
Thank you, a second?
I'll second.
All right, discussion. Christian?
So my question here is, um, this was a late add to the agenda, and is a little bit what the services that we are contracting with Blue Orange, I presume it's for some cybersecurity, um, given what the business is, but perhaps I'm wrong about that because they provide several different types of services. So if someone could just give, if someone, maybe Harvey, could just give me a quick summary of what's included?
Sure, I can speak to that. This is really tech-oriented. Uh, it's a penetration, penetration test into our network by an outside compliance organization. It's really testing and, um, trying to identify if we have any shortcomings or any areas where somebody could penetrate in, and as you've seen in the news, it's been going on for years now. Hospitals, schools alike have been, um, held hostage when individuals or organizations infiltrate the systems, and Shaun has done a tremendous job tightening things up, and this is part of, you know, the, the whole process.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that, Harvey. Any other questions? I have, I have one as it pertains to this and, and the, and the document, I think, Harvey, you kind of covered it. Their, their, their niche, uh, in this penetration testing seems to be schools and hospitals. The contract itself was pretty heavy on HIPAA, but could you just clarify that their, their, their focus will be our whole network?
Correct.
Right, and trying to actually gain access and, 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 and the like, correct?
Yeah, it's a multifaceted approach. They're not just coming in and saying, okay, let me just see if I can get in your email. No, they're looking at a very broad spectrum of our entire network.
Right, great, thank you for clarifying. Bass, yeah, go.
Thank you, John. Uh, the, the way it reads, the recommendation here is, uh, can, it's going to cost us like close to $12,000 just to do the test, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so when you do the test, you might find weaknesses, in this case vulnerabilities, they're called. Uh, what do you do if they tell you you have like five vulnerabilities you have to deal with?
Well, part of the services is not only the test, but it's a report of their findings and recommendations, based on what they find. If anything, we would address them. I mean, it's, you know, it's something we would jump on immediately, depending on the critical nature of it.
So it's going to involve more cost for, for?
Potentially.
Maybe equipment, most likely labor?
Or could also-
Versus of software, I mean, you know?
Correct, correct. We've done a tremendous amount already.
Okay.
Um, I'm confident that anything that might come up would al, would already be in the scope of Shaun's budget. It wouldn't be like we'd have to find additional funds, so, but we'll have to wait and see.
So this, this expert would be able to tell us you have?
Correct.
Let's say five vulnerabilities, and that's exactly how you deal with each one of them? Okay, thanks.
So, so Bass, I think you're getting ahead of the, 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 the report here, but I think it's important to, to, to recognize, and thank you for bringing it to the table, is that if something were to surface that would improve and harden our asset, which is our network, right, and protect bad actors from getting in and ransomware and all that other stuff that would ensue, that we'll be aware of it and we'll understand the recommended actions as a expert in that space on how we could go about hardening our, our network and the like. So, so I think first is the test, and then once we get the assessment of that test, the, the conversation will continue. Christian?
Uh, just as a follow-up, so the choices to do, uh, to agree with Blue Orange, is that because we have an ongoing relationship with them previously in this area, or is there a reason why they were identified as the vendor?
We, we do not have an existing relationship with them. Tech has gone out and, and scrubbed the, what I'll say, the experts out there, taking into account their knowledge, their experience, and this is the firm that they have identified as the one.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Any other questions? All right, so let's close the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Great, motion passed. Thank you. So this will then take us to new business and engagement survey discussion, and I will lead that discussion, but by no means, please, uh, I don't intend for this to be a soliloquy or a monologue. So, so let me give everyone an update on our actions so far to date, and when I say "our actions," those actions are really Terry, Jim, and myself, okay? We've met a couple of times and we've shared emails and materials amongst ourselves, um, once this, uh, this issue of a survey was identified as something that the board wanted to do. And so we've been, um, exploring possible vendors or, or providers, I guess, in this space. And we initially identified, I think, four, um, providers. Some of them came actually from, from some board members, and I appreciate that, that input. All those, those four providers were, were asked to provide, um, basically proposals of their wheres and what they could do, uh, for us in this space. It became apparent, um, once we reviewed the, the four proposals, that two actually emerged as being, um, uniquely positioned, I think is the word that I'll, or the term I'll, I'll use, because of their niche play in the educational space. The other, not to, to besmirch the other two, they were outstanding in their own right, and actually, in some cases, were probably better situated. But we've identified two, and, and we're very comfortable with either. There's some more follow-up that we're, we intend to do, but the purpose of, of me bringing this to everyone's attention is that we're getting to the place, or the point, of a, a decision node, right? We're going to have to make a decision, and so there's a, a consideration afoot that, um, we could proceed two different ways. One, at the next board meeting, we could put this in a recommendation and have the whole board, um, approve it, much like we've just done with this Blue Orange. Or, another avenue is basically to delegate the authority of that decision to Jim, Terry, and myself to select the two. And we, I think, as a, as a collective body here, this, this, this trio before you, we're, we're indifferent on that. We're just trying to get to a place where we can move quickly, um, because time is of the afoot, and what's unique that I haven't covered is both are willing to be able to do a benchmark this year, but all- this year, but also a follow-up in the spring. So, we'll basically be able to get two surveys, basically for the, for the, for the price of one, and to see if we can, much like the conversation Bass and, and Harvey had, where we take information, if we can apply new methods and, and, and new things to actually move the needle forward off the benchmark. So, I think that's a, that's a unique opportunity. So, I, I, if the longer we wait on, the first survey would kind of limit our ability to possibly conduct a second one at the, at the end of the year. So, I just throw that out there, and as I'm looking around, I'll just open it up for anyone who has any questions or comments to make on this. Yeah, Brendan?
Is, among those two, I'm assuming price is negligible, or is there any, any difference?
I would agree with that assessment. One may, I don't think we've, we have an answer on, on that yet, on the coserv yet, do we?
No.
On that. But, but one may appear to actually offer a discount based on coser arrangements with BOSI's.
Got it, okay.
Which might be sufficient to, to move the needle forward and represent some significant savings. But right now, the, the dollar amounts are within a couple thousand dollars of each other.
And will there be another touch-in just to help craft the survey? I think that's, from my perspective, that's the only thing that, I, I agree with you. I don't, I don't think we should waste too much time choosing the survey provider, assuming that, you know, there aren't great differences. But as long as we leave room in the process for some touch-in about crafting the survey itself.
So, so, so that's a, that's a great point, Brendan. In terms of the, the process that would ensue, after we make the selection, then it's a matter of formulating what the survey looks like. There's a whole host of data questions that both providers have, that we will be able to, to, to pick and choose from. The, what's interesting about both is that the way they both have structured it is that not only will there be engagement for teachers, but also for students as well as families. So, so, we're, we're, it's, 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 it's gonna be pretty intense in terms of the data that, that we're able to collect, but as you mentioned, the, the questions are key, and they will guide us with, I believe they both offer consultants, organizational, professional services, organizational psychologists, to help us choose the questions that we intend to, to put forward. And the questions themselves will be scoped so it's manageable, maybe 40 max
Yeah.
Along a, a number of categories.
Right, right, right. And I assume these two finalists have experience in school, in public government?
That's, that's a K through 12 specifically
On both.
Which is why they both kind of rose to the, to the top.
So, if we make a, I guess, your, your internal timeline, you're looking to pull the trigger on one of them prior to the holidays?
I think so, and, and get the ball started, at least in terms of project management stuff.
And if I'm remembering correctly from our original goals discussion, we had targeted end of February, I believe, to get that out. So, that would keep us, that would give us enough, a meeting or two to talk about questions, finalize questions, and push it out?
So, so, as I understand their process, once we select, they both have about a 12-week process from start to report, which includes, you know,
Right.
Survey development, as well as survey rollout, survey, you know, ticklers going and, and part of our stuff, the district's requirements will be, you know, figuring out that list of respondents and making sure that their systems are compatible with our ability to generate the data for them to use. So, so, so that'll be over, you know, a two-to-four week process initially, but the, the other, you know, eight weeks are either people responding to the survey, which is probably two to three weeks, and then the rest is them sifting through the data and collating in a way that's meaningful for us to be able to rely on. So, good questions, thank you. Terry, you got anything to add to that?
Just, one of the reasons we're really, wanna do some homework around the coser is, you know, again, John kind of led us through, I think our aspiration is to have these conversations at the end of the year, leading into the next year, because cost is a factor. We don't have a, this isn't a budgeted kind of next step, so I think there'll be something else that the board will have to discuss, is, you know, right now, this isn't a small price tag, so just making sure that we're all in agreement of, you know, where do we find that, those funds and things of that nature, as we try to move things forward. But that's, John really asked the question of looking at the coser, because that would make a big difference in what we could do as a district, so we hope to get that answered as quickly as we can, too.
Christine?
Are either of these firms ones that Terry you've worked with, or you know schools that have worked with them?
Yeah, K-12 Insight I worked with personally.
I shared with John and Jim, I was cleaning out my desk at, at my house, and I pulled my, my K-12 Insight
that I had as an assistant superintendent for all 45 of my schools and what the graphics looked like, the questions that were selected.
When you, John, when you mentioned they, they have all these questions we can select, in my experience, I'm used to getting a template of standard questions, so you can benchmark against others-like businesses. Will they do that, so that we're benchmarking against similar schools, or do they have a big database?
So
Because if we're just picking questions without some consultation
So, the, 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 the choosing of the questions, or the scoping of the questions, is done in consultation?
Okay.
And actually, they, their project manager or consultant actually leads us through that process. The reason why they, both of these providers rose to the, to the top is the other two providers, while they did have data in the educational realm, in terms of respondent data, it wasn't deemed to be as robust and specific to K through 12, which is really, that's the, that's our domain, that's what we care about, and that's what we're interested in.
Of course, of course, yeah.
Right, so.
And, and
So, the benchmarking is, 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 is key. Not only how, you know, we're responding, or the respondents are responding, but how do other people in other places? And they, and they both have national scope, not just here in New York State, but also nationally, so it, their databases are all quite robust.
Great, and I don't doubt that at all. It's more a matter of, if we're not picking similar questions, we can't compare, right? So, that's why I just wanted to make sure that they have a consultant who's gonna guide on that, so that we can compare. My other caution, and I know that they're selling it as like a, a bonus, where you can do a survey and then do another survey pretty quickly. My caution around that, and maybe this helps shave cost off, I don't know, is that we have to give ourselves time to really make a difference, because people will just be disappointed if we're going out and saying, oh, have we made improvements? And we didn't really have the time to do so. So, I would just offer that as a caution. I know you haven't committed to anything, and I'm, it's not a decision that's been made, but maybe there's a, that influences pricing, you know, that, to do that so quickly might not be a benefit, actually. So, just a thought to consider as you're moving forward with the pricing.
Right. Thanks, Christine. Christian?
What is the second firm that's, I guess, a finalist, other than K-12 Insight?
The second firm is called Tripod. They are a wholly-owned subsidiary of Scolaris, if you're familiar with Scolaris, and also a parent known as Education Elements, I believe. Which are ultimately affiliated with, I believe, the, through seed money from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation.
Thank you.
Okay. Great questions, and we're all moving this forward, so, any other? So, what, what, what about the, the idea of, of we just continue to, to, to move forward? Terry, Jim, and I make the, make the selection, once we get our question. We'll provide everyone the, the calculus behind that, and we'll, we'll share that at, hopefully, the next meeting. I think we can get an answer to that coser by then, right? Yeah. Is that?
Yeah, yeah, I'm fine with that. The, the assumption is, though, if the coser comes through, that's the one we're going with. Is that right?
It, there, there's other things that we probably do wanna to validate, so to speak, but depending on what significant savings. Right now, that firm that does have the coser is the, the most efficient in terms of the, the cost structure right now.
And there is a chance that they're both eligible.
There, there might be, yeah.
So.
Since they're, oh, by the way, they're both in Orange County doing work at various schools.
Can you just explain what is coser? I'm not familiar with that term.
I will turn it over to our assistant superintendent for business, who is well acquainted with coser.
Sure. So, the na- coser really means cooperative service, just an abbreviation for it. BOSI's is an organization that is in place, really, to make districts more efficient by virtue of having a shared service, rather than each district having to have their own. And this is one of those cosers or shared services that they would, that they currently put out. One thing I will mention, just from an educational perspective, keep in mind two things. Even though it's a coser, it's really important to make sure that it's aidable. Just because it's a coser doesn't mean it's aidable. The other thing to keep in mind is, we always get the aid on cosers the next year. So, if the cost is $10,000 this year, and it's a 50% aidability, we get that $5,000 the next year. Okay, so just keep that in mind.
Good questions. Thank you, Harvey, for the good answers, the better answers. Okay. And, oh, Linda? Yeah? So so, so, that's an important, is, is there, is there, thank you, Linda, for that. Just hold off, we're gonna, we're gonna come back to that in a second. So, so as it pertains to this, this survey, we're, we're all good with the direction? We're making movement?
Sorry, just one last thing.
Yeah.
When, so you make a selection, that would be, you mentioned that would be on a recommended action at the next meeting?
Yes.
Got it, okay.
Which, fingers crossed, is this
Just wanted to wrap my head around the process here.
I think you answered what I was gonna ask. This is to select the, the group.
Yeah.
Right.
Correct. Okay, well, thank you for that. So, now that Linda has brought it up to our attention, that the, the documents pertaining to, to, to CSE and CPSE were not part of the package, but are now, have been uploaded? Is, is, is that? Here's a, here, here, I guess, a question for, for, for Terry, maybe Megan, or both. Is an action tonight necessary? Or can this be deferred till the next time we meet? Is, i.e., it's necessary if someone who is entitled or been recommended for services would not receive those services until the next time we, we, we vote? I would say, well, it's necessary to do tonight. But if those services are ongoing, then I would be willing to just continue that until next time we meet. So, just to, to clarify, because I, I wanna take care of the kids, that's our number-one priority. And thank you, Linda, for bringing, I know, no, 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 I'm glad you brought it to everyone's attention, and we'll, we'll get to the bottom and get this right, so. But Terry, what do you, what, what do you think?
I'd, I'd rather wait just, I'm just not seeing the students attached to I see, I see a report, but I'm not seeing what I typically see for student placement.
I'm seeing what I typically see.
Yeah.
You seeing this?
That's what we see. That's what we see.
Okay. Okay, and the resolution usually has student number X, Y, and Z, but the, the report contains everything. Yeah, it's, it's ongoing, so I, I think we can defer to the board, just whichever way you wanna go.
I, I, I just
Yeah.
I don't wanna run into this
Yeah, it's either way.
Compliance issue where we're not and, and we had the opportunity to do it tonight. So, so, what if we do this? Because I, if we could settle it, and I don't want people just feel that they're being forced into it. Let us take three minutes to, it's only about six pages, right? So, so, let's take a pause in the meeting and
Review the document.
What's that?
Just review the document.
Just review the document, and then we'll put this back on the agenda. So, we'll, we'll, we'll take a pause for everyone to review it, and we'll just keep the document.
Or was it, oh, someone paged up email, three pages?
Yeah, so this is, that's a better view, probably. Well. So, let's compare what, what Terry sees versus, so, so
And I'm so sorry, and I'm just gonna say, if you let the board know, if they ever see anything that's not attached, just shoot me an email too, because then maybe I didn't save it when I attached it. Because I'm thinking that's what I did, so I was like, no, I attached it, but I might not save it.
These are, these are special, right? Because they don't get posted.
Might be only the executive session, so only you guys can see it.
Until the meeting's over.
No, they're, they're posted before. They're posted as soon as I make
And that's
So, they're always there, but only the board
No, right, exactly, yeah. So, but there's, do they ever get Never, okay, so they're always guarded, always guarded, yeah.
Exactly, exactly. So, like, if somebody doesn't see it, maybe they just send an email.
Yes, okay, that's the one picture I saw, I already saw that one. So, I, I saw it yesterday, I saw it yesterday, and I presumed that there was just, it was what Terry said, that it was just a date, a schedule, on the agenda, that's why I was clarifying. And I was, versus, perhaps, when you're not logged in, you don't see that, because this is a board.
I would say, even if that's your question, it's just
Yeah, I think
And they can see it, too.
Yeah.
It's like, I never made a mistake in 14 years, I was like, oh my God. I'm like, okay.
Worries, Linda. Thank you for being
Okay, so if you want to
Thanks for being courageous. Most people wouldn't do that. Alright. Okay, so, I think everyone has had a chance to review. I'm looking for anyone going east-west on their, saying that they require more time. So, so, let's do this.
Someone requires more time, I'm sorry.
No.
No, I'm, I'm looking for if, sorry. So, so, let's go back then to this item, which I believe was number four in the consent agenda. agenda. And it's, as per the document, placement of CPSC and CSC cases, um, as per the document that, um, we've just had an opportunity to, uh, review. I'd like a motion to put this back on the agenda. And a second? Thank you.
Second.
Um, any discussion? I just wanna thank Linda for bringing this to our attention. That's, it's, um, that's important, that you were able to, to let us know. And, uh, hats off to you for, for being courageous in that regard, so thank you so much. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Great, all right, motion passed. All right, fantastic. Okay, so then, I think that then takes us to public comments. Seeing how the public is not before us right now, I will move on to then closing comments for the board, and I will ask our student representatives to lead us off, if you'd be so kind.
I think this is like dying, but, um, I don't know, there's not much that I have to say, but thank you for a good meeting, and happy belated Thanksgiving.
I'm, I'm the same with Kate. I don't really have anything to add, so I'm gonna pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Thank you, Nick. All right, um, looking this way, I'll go this way, Bass, please.
Thanks, John. Yeah, happy Thanksgiving, everybody, and, uh, I'd like to take this opportunity actually to share with you, uh, the votes on the resolutions. That long meeting, and I did, I do have here, uh, handout, I summarized everything, because I believe it's important for us as a board to see where we are with the rest of the school districts in, uh, the state. So after, uh, you know, you see kind of, I color-coded everything, and I'm, I'm, I'm gonna explain, uh, really why, to me, these were the highlights, you know, and referring to the colors. But, uh, before kind of everybody gets a chance to take a look, I wanna mention that, you know, what I noticed, uh, that as a school district, we didn't propose anything, like, we're not proposing resolutions. I think this is something for us to think about and kind of advocate, not only for us as a school district, but for the rest of the school districts in the state. Maybe like next round, uh, we can have something, again, that's gonna have our name tagged to it, Cornwall School District is proposing so-and-so. And as you see that, you know, every school district will get a vote on it. And, and, and the thing is, like, what's the result of that? The, the, uh, uh, NY, what do you call it, NYSSPA, the school, the New York State School Board Association, goes to Albany and kind of like advocate for something that the school districts feel, uh, strong about, right? So kind of, it's not like gonna, whatever, something, a resolution that was voted yes on, it's not like it's gonna happen, no, it still has to go to the legislator, legislator, and, uh, becomes kind of law, possibly. So we're kind of advocating for, 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 uh, some measures. Now, uh, you do have, um, again, here, what you see, there are, uh, a total of 56 resolutions, and, uh, you would see, like, the last column that, uh, holds percentages, this is kind of, uh, NISBA voted to pass, right? Kind of, I mean, or the resolution passed by a certain percentage. As you can see, like, the, 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 the top starts like with 90%, 90, in, in the 90s, uh, which means kind of the resolutions weren't controversial, the way I look at them, like, pretty much everybody was in agreement. And you can see that our vote in the last, uh, green column, uh, kind of matches with the, uh, with, with the vote that night, right? I mean, we voted yes, I mean, the rest of the, uh, school districts in the state of New York voted yes as well. And it start to go like the, the disagreements start to go as we went, uh, down that meeting till midnight. We started at four, by the way, we finished at midnight. Eight hours meeting, I told John, I mean, like, the next day, we're chatting on the phone, the longest meeting I've been to my whole life, eight hours meeting. I, I've, I've never experienced it, uh, experienced that. So I have some comments about like the procedure itself, I'm gonna go to, um, I'm gonna go through. But again, you would notice that, uh, we started off by kind of like general agreement, you know, resolutions passing by kind of 90% grade, down to like the 50/50, right? I mean, towards, towards the bottom. Now, what you see kind of like the top resolutions from the first column, you see the number of resolutions, till resolution from one till 32, those where there's a committee in, uh, in NISBA, it's the Resolution Committee, right? And they had, I mean, all of you read those resolutions, they had recommendation, like, we recommend, we're in support of this, right? Like, we recommend voting yes on this resolution. Those from one till 32, what you see in like pink or beige, from 33 till 56, the Resolution Committee of NISBA was recommending a vote no on, right? Now, this is kind of, you know, the vote sometimes agreed with what the committee, uh, uh, wanted to hear, and sometimes, uh, it didn't. Okay, so this is kind of maybe a long introduction, but I'm gonna start like giving you kind of here, kind of the, 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 the remarks I have. During that meeting, the, the reason it went for eight hours, because resolution by resolution, they read it aloud, and the delegates like me start to debate. And this is where I saw that there's no point in debating. I mean, remember that I collected our votes, and I went, and no matter what, I hear, even those who proposed the resolutions themselves, sometimes we're on the screen, telling us why they proposed it, well, I'm sorry, I'm not gonna change my vote, okay? You can go on, talk as much as you want, but I'm not gonna change my vote. I was bound by the vote you gave me, right? So that's why putting this meeting together wasn't questioned to me, that the whole format didn't make any sense. Okay, uh, remark number two, by the time we reached the recommendations that NISBA, uh, that was opposed to, right, kind of like the beige and the, like, 33 till 56, we're talking like, you know, it was like 10:30, remember, we kind of, you know, we went home at midnight, 10:00, 10:30, people start leaving, because like they kept the count of the delegate, we're around 300, 310, we have like 400 school districts, like in the 400s, but we had quorum, and they started leaving, so the quorum was in question. Like, the last five, 10 resolutions, we barely made it. We almost lost quorum at that point, right? So, a, and then people who remained, like, so kind of, you know, attached, they wanna vote, you can see like the vote, like, changed. What does that mean? I don't know, just an observation, um, compared with our vote, like, we started losing, like, bunk, 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 every time, like, we, we wanna vote yes, the general vote was no, and by 56%, 52%, you can see like there was a huge division, okay? So, uh, then you see the red, what I put in red font, right? I mean, those, those, the ends and the percentages that I put in red. What does that red mean? Uh, it, it means we disagreed with the general vote. This is kind of Cornwall voting yes, and the state of New York saying no. Cornwall voting no, the state of New York saying yes, right? So that, to me, was kind of, whoa, I mean, if you're out of curiosity, you can go this weekend, go back to the resolution and see how Cornwall is thinking, how this remaining district think. We were in disagreement. I highlighted that in, in red. Not much, less than 50%, of course. So in, in general, we do agree with the rest, rest of the state. Now, what you see, the, the highlight in green, right? I mean, green bars, green rows, what does that mean? We, this means that we were in agreement, okay? Uh, uh, we were in agreement with the Resolution Committee of NISBA, and, 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 uh, and we won. And we won. NISBA, uh, kind of the rest of the state of New York, uh, kind of voted in a way, but kind of, uh, uh, we won, okay? So kind of like, take one, for instance, uh, we were in disagreement with the Resolution Committee, and then we won, which means we agreed with, uh, uh, the rest of the district in the state of New York. This, to me, is, is kind of, I mean, telling, right? I mean, you take, like, I'm gonna read, pick one by kind of, you know, I'm picking, um, I'm picking 35, look at 35. The, the synopsis of the resolution is waiver for small rural district from zero emission. Like, we're tiny, small district, like, we don't need to go buy AVs, like, electric buses. Uh, now, the Resolution Committee recommended a no, we voted yes, and the rest of this district voted yes. Kind of, that's kind of what the green means. Um, okay. Now, what you see in yellow, the yellow, yellow rose, um, we were not in agreement with the resolution, and we lost, which means the rest of the state did go with the recommended, uh, recommendation from the, uh, Committee Resolution. And I would finish with the last two comments. Uh, the electric buses, there were like more than one resolution on electric buses, they failed. Kind of, I mean, pretty much, and this is, this is big, this, this was a huge outcome. Uh, the rest of the school districts in the state of New York do not agree with having the fleet converted to electric. I mean, a, and again, I mean, this is kind of now, NISBA is bound by our vote to go to Albany and tell them, we don't like it, okay? It's just kind of, you know, we're advocating, it's not, I don't know if it's gonna happen or not, but, uh, there was a lot of discussions that, uh, it, it is, electric bus is not gonna be able to replace, to replace the buses we have. And the last thing, I mean, again, for everybody, the last comment I have is, uh, they were kind of towards the very bottom, you can see a lot of, a lot of red, which means we disagreed with the rest of the districts in the state, and we lost, right? And those were, I would say, controversial, and you can go back and go back to the main document and read more about those resolutions, uh, they were controversial resolutions. For instance, advocating for more parental or parents' involvement, parents' rights. Uh, we were for it as Cornwall, as we voted in this board, the rest of the district were against it, okay? We lost that one. Uh, more sexual education, starting with kindergarten, Cornwall was against it, the rest of the school district were for it, but, but, they won by 51%, 52%, it's not 60s, which means, uh, school districts are really split on that, but yet, we lost. Another thing we lost is, like, the last two, and I'll, I'll finish it for tonight. Test scores to be used as teacher ratings, for teacher rating. There was, there was a resolution to decouple it. Uh, we didn't want to decouple it, again, the vote was, yeah, decouple it, like, you know, s, right? I mean, you know what it means, like, teachers' rating should not be affected by the test, the students taught by that professor or teacher, uh, kind of, uh, results. So we lost that one. And the last thing is, uh, kind of, there was a resolution advocating for more local controls by school boards, and even county executives, versus what? Versus Albany. Again, that resolution failed. Like, again, in, in the 50s, very low score, but they like to have Albany keep their controls on school district. They don't like school district to think, hey, you know, that doesn't fit me, no, it's like, one thing, pfft, fits all, coming from Albany. That's all I have, and again, I mean, you, you know the color coding, you can go back to the resolutions, all 56 of them, if you wanna read more, uh, but the results are, uh, are telling. I was happy to do it, John, I mean, I know it took eight hours, uh, I know, and I filled out the survey, and I mentioned what I mentioned here, uh, I hope they hear it and they change the format next year. But I was very happy to do it.
Thank you, Bass. Christine?
That's a tough one to follow. Thank you for those eight hours, Bass. That's tenacity, right? But very, and thanks for the detailed, um, report out, 'cause that was helpful to understand the big picture. Really, um, piggybacking on, um, what Terry shared, like, a lot of really great Cornwall things to be prideful of in the fall. I think we even had some school records broken. I, I know about one in football, there might have been others, so I don't wanna leave anyone out, but, you know, those are some really exciting things. And, um, you know, kudos to the drama department, they put on a historical drama, which is quite different than what they've done in the past. Nick was, um, in the show, Radium Girls, it was very different, but they did a really exceptional job, um, portraying something of a more serious nature than what they typically do. So they're back to comedy for the spring, so we can, you know, lighten, lighten up a little, but, uh, they did a great job, so congratulations to all our students that have achieved greatness in their areas.
Thank you, Christine. Carl?
Just keep mine real short, I just wanted to thank Megan and Terry for, we had an awesome time with the visitation. Glad, I'm so happy, you know, it was really a good time, and, uh, just thank you for making that all work. That's all I have.
Thanks, Carl. Louis?
Sure, thank you. Nick and Kate, thank you as always for your reports, appreciate having you guys here. Um, yeah, I'd like to congratulate all our sports teams, again, piggyback on what you said there, a, a lot of successes in the fall. Again, the, uh, the trap is to try to name them, and you always forget one, so you don't do it. So congratulations to everybody who, who had their achievements, and while I didn't go to see Radium Girls and have an opportunity, I heard it was fabulous, or, it, it was, again, another stellar performance by our kids. And then, um, on the heels of the sports team successes, again, congratulations to Mr. Sorbino on his, on his being selected as our, our, our New York State Master Teacher. It's nice to have another one in the queue, so, uh, thank you for all that you do, Mr. Sorbino. Thank you.
Thanks, Louis. Brendan?
Thanks, John. Uh, yeah, just, uh, congratulations to the entire cast of Radium Girls. Nick, you did a fantastic job. I think it was a different show than, uh, than in years past, but that, that's great. It's just great to see, um, kids flex their, their different chops and, and pull off such a impactful show. Nick and Kate, just in general, thank you for, again, for your, your, your great insights, and Bass, um, I know I said really nice things about you the last time, and you left early, or you, no, you weren't here, of course, 'cause you were there for eight hours, so I'll say it again, this is just yeoman's work, thank you for doing this. I actually was, not to nerd out, but I was, I was actually hoping for something like this, and sure enough, you, you came through, 'cause it was, to your point, I think so many of the votes were not, in years past, it seemed more obvious what the committee recommended would likely be the outcome, and my read on this was that it was gonna be a much muddier, uh, result. So I, I, I think this, of all the years to do it, this, this was the one, and I think you have just inadvertently signed up to do this in perpetuity, so, uh, you can't, you can't back down now. Uh, and I hope everybody had a, a great Thanksgiving.
Thanks, Brendan. Christian?
I'm just saying, um, just to Bass, because I actually created my own spreadsheet, more or less, on this, with slightly different categories, so, um, I guess, perhaps great minds are not think alike, um, but I'll just make a point, one, a thing about this, that the thing with NISBA is that roughly about half the public school students in New York State are not represented by a school board in New York City. And one thing about this is that this is policy for the whole state, and school boards don't necessarily represent the entirety of, of what is affected by the policies that are passed. And I think when we think about that, you know, we should consider that the non, you know, ones under mayor control are very different than the ones that are under school board control. And I think that's something to think about when we think about state policy. But I wanna use my time, and I'm sorry that we've been recently in the business of recognizing people who have made great contributions to our school district that have recently passed, and, um, but I just would like to add one more, um, and that is Margaret Satterley, who was, um, who died res- on November 6th, at 98 years young. And for those who don't know Margaret Satterley, she was one of the original kindergarten teachers in this building, um, and before that, she was a kindergarten teacher at what was at the time called Canterbury Elementary School, which is now known as Wall Avenue. And she worked for, uh, from 1960 to 1980 in Cornwall, after being an elementary school teacher in Newburgh. And I am told by someone who knew her well, that she had her teacher's voice well into her 90s. And for those who are teachers, you know, the people who walk in the room, and they immediately have control out of all the chaos in the room. And I just wanna wish that all of our Cornwall teachers... And I just want to wish that all of our Cornwall teachers will have as long and meaningful life as Margaret did. Thank you.
Well said, Christian, thank you for the share on that. Richard?
So as always, I'll start, Kate and Nick, great job, going to challenge you a little bit, so you said this was a good meeting, right? Is that because it's a shorter one? Is that why? It helps, right? But no, no, in all seriousness, no, thank you, you guys do a great job bringing the student perspective, everything that's going on in the schools to us, and I know we really appreciate it. And as Carl said, I want to thank Megan, Terry, all our building administration and teachers and staff that welcomed us into the schools as the visitation committee, we really enjoyed it, and it was a really productive time we had in our buildings. And lastly, I want to congratulate all our sports teams, not going to name them out specifically, because as mentioned before, I'll forget one, and I attended the NHS induction ceremony last week, phenomenal, I just want to congratulate all 50-ish students that were inducted, so great job, thank you, hope everyone had a great Thanksgiving.
Thanks, Richard. Jim?
With all proper regards and due respect to former board member Matt Bannon, I will say ditto.
So you took the words right out of my mouth. Let me just make two observations and a comment. First, a comment, nothing succeeds like success, and we have a lot of success going on in our district, and that just doesn't happen by accident, that happens through vision, it happens through hard work, and it happens through execution. So hats off to everybody, and I'm grateful for it, and I hope everyone had a Thanksgiving that they were able to reflect on gratitude and how we've come to be where we are, so thank you for that. Observation, Bass, thanks for not taking eight hours to go through the pained eight-hour meeting that you were at, and for summarizing it in this format, as well as putting it on the map, that really as a board, we should spend some time digesting this and seeing, does this fit our expectations, right? Because this was kind of done in a closed vacuum, where we individually provided our thoughts, and how does that, how do these results match with what I would call the consensus view of the board? I think it really does a pretty good job, but it also, I think, in some instances, highlights where, you know, probably more time and effort could be spent in trying to reduce the divide on some of these items. The second observation I have, as a, it's very easy to look at these things as a zero-sum game, you know, I win, you lose. That's really not what I think this is all about. This is all about trying to discover, if you will, what is the right policies for our kids to be effective in the 21st century? And it starts with conversations, and I hope that the conversation continues, and to Bass's other point about having this on our map, the only way that we can get this on our map is if we continue the conversation in the spring and in the summer, as we get ready to cast those votes. So Bass, again, thank you for what you did in putting this important issue on the map for us and for our consideration, and as well as our awareness, as well as the community's awareness. And I'm happy to say that in so many regards, what we thought was Cornwall's position is Cornwall's position, and we see where we stand in unison with others, as well as where we, you know, have an opportunity to bridge the gap where it may exist. So thank you again. All right, with that, I'd like to get a motion to end the meeting. Second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hey, thank you, everyone, have a great night.